He is out of them.
(inaudible)
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 Anyway, uh...
(inaudible)
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 No.
(inaudible)
(inaudible)
Oh, I can't believe it.
(inaudible)
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 Hi.
(inaudible)
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 Yeah.
(inaudible)
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 Counselor.
Well, you know, I've been...
(inaudible)
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 Yeah.
Anyway, (inaudible).
Yep.
(inaudible)
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 Yep.
(inaudible)
(cough)
(inaudible)
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 (cough)
Gardner City Council will come to order a huge please stand for the pledging leaders. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, very good. Now, we've got a couple of presentations this evening, but before we get started, I would like to introduce Cheryl Harrison Lee. Cheryl is our new full-time city administrator. She has a lot of experience under her belt with Gardner. She's been here since 8:00 a.m. this morning. So, I'm sure that she's able to answer anyone's questions should they arise. But if you would join me in welcoming Cheryl.
(applause)
At some point in the not-too-distant future, we will have an evening reception so members of the community can come in and meet her and get to know her a little bit. I'm sure we'll have plenty of time to get to know her very, very well in her career. We're excited to have her here, Cheryl. Thank you for being here. Okay, well, first, presentation is something that I enjoy doing. And if I could, I've got three representatives from the Shriners, Joe Rich, Vernon Fickenbinder, and Clyde Collins. But most importantly, we have here Mr. Marcus Williams, formerly of the Trail Blazers, Horns, and will be representing us in the Kansas All-Star Football Shrine Bowl Day. So, if you could, all of you come up and join me, I would be happy to read this proclamation. This is something that's gone on for quite some time. Mrs. Williams, come on up. Come on up. Obviously, the shrine, we know for the outstanding charitable endeavors that they participate in, providing treatment, comfort, and care for lots and lots of children and their families. And that is a wonderful, wonderful service that you all provide to our communities throughout the nation. And that is tremendous. It is a... It's a blessing to have all of those families touched by your generosity. But this specifically is the Kansas All-Star Football Shrine Bowl. And we are very, very honored to have Marcus representing us in the bowl. So, I do have a proclamation regarding that. And whereas the Shrine Bowl of Kansas Incorporated, sponsored by the five shrine centers of Kansas, namely Abdallah of Overland Park, Arab of Topeka, Isis of Salina, Midian of Wichita, and Mirza of Pittsburgh, will sponsor their 39th annual All-Star Football Game on July 28, 2012, in Emporia, Kansas, and continue their tradition of philanthropy. And whereas, over 89 years, the ancient Arabic order of the Nobles of Mystic Shrine of North America through its network of hospitals has treated over 865,000 children with orthopedic disabilities and in more recent years, treated thousands of severely burned children through its Burn Institute. And whereas the citizens of the city of Gardner may aid this worthy and impartial work and further the efforts of this great charity and their support of this philanthropic event to favor the unfortunate children regardless of race and creed. And whereas, All-Star Marcus Williams, 2012 senior from Gardner Edgeston High School, will be representing the city of Gardner in this year's Kansas Shrine Bowl. Now therefore be resolved that I, David C. Revetta, Mayor of the city of Gardner, Kansas, do hereby proclaim July 28, 2012, as Kansas All-Star Football Shrine Bowl Day to honor Marcus Williams. Congratulations, young man. That's your...
(applause)
Today, would you like to speak?
Uh, no.
No? Any gentlemen, any words you'd like to say?
Just to point out that all of the profits from the Kansas Shrine Bowl go directly to the hospitals. And we have put many millions in there since the game started 39 years ago. Like to invite all of you to come out a week from Saturday. It'll be cool in them for you.
It'll be...
That's right. You'll see the best football players from Kansas participating all over the state. So, show up early at 10:00 a.m., we're having a parade.
There you go.
It'll be cooler than. And drink lots of water.
And drink lots of water.
Yeah, I drink before you get there.
Would you like to say anything?
Um, I just count down the days, I'm kind of excited.
I bet you are. I bet you are. It'll be a great day. And just make sure you take an umbrella and lots of sunscreen, right?
Oh, okay.
All right, well, wonderful. Thank you all very much. Congratulations. Good luck at KU. And I'm sure you'll do very, very well there and enjoy your college career and hopefully successful in high school.
All right, thank you.
Very well.
(applause)
See you next year, right?
Very much.
You bet. Or see you on August 11th.
You bet.
Right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, very good.
Go be here.
Thank you, Paul.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have two more presentations. These are very wonderful presentations that need to be made and need to be recognized. But Jason, if you could join me, Mary, if you could join me as well. You know, we talk about safety quite a bit. You hear us talk about safety and safety programs and the training that has been in place. But we often wonder what's the return on that investment? Well, you know, having an employee show up in the morning and be able to go home healthy and safe is return enough. But we have some pretty outstanding folks here in Gardner. And we've got a number, 98 out of 108, who went a whole year without injury, loss work to injury. And then the second was five years. But I'll let... Jason, anything you'd like to say?
Um, yeah, I... About the program. Jason Bruce, I am serving as the Safety Committee Chairman. I just wanted to take this time to thank all department heads and supervisors on behalf of the Safety Committee for allowing our members the time to spend. We have our monthly safety meeting the third Tuesday of every month. We meet for an hour to discuss various items. These are representatives from each department who come out of the field or out of their office to spend time to review various items. We talk about our safety culture. And a lot of the credit does go to our department heads and supervisors for allowing us the time to spend with our annual checks, to everything involved. So, council, the mayor, everybody is very, very supportive. Cheryl, we're excited for you to be a part of our safety culture and kind of see what we're about. So, just wanted to take that time and say thank you. And a big thanks to Mary and Lisa. They keep us all straight and pointing in the right direction, so...
Great, wonderful. Well, you know, that's great that we've had 98 folks that have made it a full year. I think something that's even more extraordinary that we're going to talk about this evening is of those 98, 34 of those folks have gone five years without an injury, loss work to injury. And that is significant. I'm going to read their names. Jason is one of those 34 employees. And I think it's also good to recognize that this program has been in place for five years. So, the streak may be longer, but that's how long we've been keeping records. And that OSHA requirements do not extend any to this building. This is something that we do voluntarily. It does certainly obviously help us with our insurance. And it's really done wonders for our workers' comp. But Jason has been safe for five years, but he's also been with this program for the full five years. And that certainly would...
(applause)
But I would like to read the names of those 34. I think it's worthwhile knowing who they are and recognizing them. Jim Sherman, Kurt Altek, and Amy Keiner from Community Development. From the Police Department, Jay Belcher is with us this evening. Steve Benz, Kurt Hollingshead, Lee Kraut, Ruth Lundey, Jim Moore, Joel Ulich, Eileen Spalding, and Jason Willis from Public Works. Jody Demeline, thank you very much. David Greenie, there he is. Dan Hauser, David Jolliffe, Mike Kessler, Sharon Rose, Jerry Six, Matt Solario, and Cindy Weeks. Parks and Rec, of course, Jason. Aaron Bro, Matt McClure, Tim Rogers, and Jeff over here. In Finance, Joanne Eaton, Amy Foster, Karen McCollum, and Dina Scott. Administration, Lisa Wilms. And then from Gardner Energy is here tonight, Janet Hackney. Deanna, Brandon McCollum, and Mark Sullivan. All those employees, tremendous job.
(applause)
A safe work environment is a good work environment. And we are glad that everyone has really adopted that belief and work very, very hard to keep all of our staff safe every day. So, thank you all very much. I'm going to leave these with you, sir, so you can hand them out at the meeting. Tremendous job. Keep it up. You bet. Thank you, Mary. Before we move on to the agenda, we do have time allotted for public comment. Members of the public are welcome to speak on matters that do not appear on the agenda, that are part of the agenda but not part of a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak, please come forward, state your name and address. That being the case, we will move on to the consent agenda. Is there a council member who wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Numbers four and seven. Okay, how would the council like to proceed with items one, two, three, five, and six?
I move we approve consent agenda items one, two, three, five, and six.
Second.
Motion Harrison, second Freeman, that we approve items one, two, three, five, and six. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda item number five... Or, excuse me, number four. Consider authorizing the purchase of an LED message board from Paving Maintenance Supply Incorporated.
This isn't the picture, is it?
Uh, no, I apologize for that.
Looked a little...
I was going to say, we're probably getting ripped off if I'm paying for...
No.
...put messages on this thing.
Right. I guess we can... Considering we already own it.
But I do question why we can't use just, you know, made-up signs in multiple locations. I mean, what is the... Seems like $16,000 is a lot of money to spend when we have other uses for the money.
Well, what this does is provide a very rapid means of notification. Cases and points are a situation a couple of weekends ago where we had a boil order. A good case in point would be the water outage we had in St. John's Trace last December where we had about what we hoped to be like a short-term outage because of complications that went on for quite a while. Had we had a message board, we would be using it there. It's a case of, we use them about five or six times a year now, but it's because we can't borrow or rent them. We used to borrow one from the county. We've kind of worn out our welcome borrowing theirs. We rent them, they're about 500 bucks for about three days. Parks and Rec would use them for a lot of their events. The Prairie Punisher would be a good example. So, they are a very versatile unit, heavily used throughout metropolitan government work. You find a very rapid way to make changing situations, lane drops, utility issues. Very versatile piece of equipment.
But only one. It can be deployed in one location.
It can only be employed in one location, which is one more than we can now. If you go with the...
What's the difference from just having a sign made that says boil order? Like, much like the signs that are at the exits on Gardner Road and talk about the water rationing. That was probably up less than half a day when I saw it and...
Right. Well, we have those in stock. In this case, you can't have a sign for every situation in stock. If you do have a situation that develops in odd hours, then you can deploy this unit. Just program in the message you need to... You need.
David, is it common for cities of our size to have their own LED signage? At least one available with this?
I think it's a common yes. I think most... I think cities like Latham would have multiples, but it's a very useful thing for a town of, you know, approaching 20,000 people.
It really... We use a sign that was our own much, much more than we've had in the past only because we either had to rent or borrow.
Absolutely.
Good uses are way beyond.
That is correct, sir.
I emailed Jody earlier just to ask him about the lack of expecting a piece of equipment. If you're going to put $16,000 into it, he thought at the very minimum of 10 years. Is that probably accurate? Or do you know even maybe a little bit more detail?
I think 10 years is the place to start, yes.
Okay.
So, does it have a diesel... I'm assuming it's got a generator?
No, it does not.
Oh, it's a battery?
It's battery and solar power. They've all gone away from a generator. In the old days, you'd have a generator that would, you know, be fairly loud. But now they're all solar-powered with battery pack.
Other questions for David? How would council like to proceed?
I move we authorize the purchase of an LED message board from Paving Maintenance Supply in the amount of $16,125, according to...
Second.
Motion Harrison, second Morrow, that we authorize the purchase of an LED message board. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Consent agenda item number seven, consider authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with Clearwater Equipment for the repair and refurbishment of the ultraviolet disinfection system at the Hill Creek wastewater plant.
Here, I was just looking for other bids. See one bid and...
And the reason there is no other bid is it's a... Basically, it's a proprietary system. This is the company that... The rep for the company, so there really is no other option but to go with the system manufacturer.
And to replace it with another manufacturer is $900,000?
If you went in and replaced it, you're talking $900,000 was the estimate we had.
What types of repairs do you think you'd need?
Well, there are devices on it that... Basically, it's a scrubber. As the flow goes through, there's a buildup on the tubes. The scrubber's been out of action for a while. It needs to be repaired. These, like most pieces of equipment, require, you know, periodic maintenance. We have been just replacing bulbs, which are fairly expensive. This would be the first step toward a service contract, just to keep it refurbished. The technicians have to be brought in from out of town. Generally, if you bring them in, it's going to cost you about $5,000 anyway, so... But this is just a first step, bring it back up to snuff, and then we'll just enter into a maintenance contract and keep it up to snuff.
And so then what would the annual maintenance contract be?
It's running about $10,000.
Okay. How would council like to proceed with item number seven?
I move we approve consent agenda item number seven.
Second.
Motion Morrow, second Harrison, that we approve the authorized city administrator to execute contract with Clearwater Equipment for repair and refurbishment of the UV disinfection system. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. New business item number one. Consider a conditional use permit for Recycle with Integrity, division of Integrity Communications, located at 408 East Main Street. This would be CUP-12-04. Would also be ordinance number?
2397, Mayor.
2397. Hello, Amy. (laughing) Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Do you want to introduce?
I was going to say that Amy is out this evening, and Dave Nopick has been doing some work for us in the planning department and familiar with the planning items on tonight's agenda and will be handling questions if you have any in the presentations.
I'll try to do my best with the questions. I just have a brief overview presentation for you to get comfortable with the application. As mentioned earlier, the applications for conditional use permit for Recycle with Integrity located at 408 East Main Street here in Gardner. This is a conditional use permit to allow for the storage of recycled donations that this company is receiving at their site. They have been recycling cell phones. You may traditionally know them as associated with cellphone business. Recently, that's expanded into several other types of electronics as well as consumer goods. And they have seen an increased demand by the public to drop off those elements to either donate and pass downstream or to recycle through the stream through other providers. So, they are kind of an interim stop, if you will. In doing this, they are meeting a community need in the sense of the increased traffic that people are now seeing for wanting to recycle these elements. So, we do feel that this is a use that's very appropriate in the C2 business district. This is also located within the midtown district of the Main Street Corridor Plan. With that, the Planning Commission did consider this item and had a public hearing on it at June 26. And they did recommend 5 to 0 to go ahead and recommend approval with eight stipulations that are provided for you in the packet. With that, I will ask for any questions. Counsel, questions?
The people with integrity, they're the ones that will be making a determination about whether or not something is hazardous or non.
Correct. What will happen is all arrangements for the recycling have to occur during the office hours or by appointment with a staff member. They'll make a determination as to, number one, if the product itself is something that they can handle or not. So, it should not be left on the site by itself or anything like that. From that perspective, they will make that determination as to whether they're dealing with something that's more hazardous or not. I know in several cases with things like appliances, refrigeration elements and things like that, they really don't want to be dealing with those kinds of things. They may take them to pass them downstream just so they're dealt with, but they really don't want to have them on their site. So, I know they're not interested in that kind of hazardous material handling. And I don't... I don't believe the applicant is here tonight. I didn't see him.
The other thing that I would wonder about is, I mean, if they are taking something that requires refrigerant, are they requiring that the refrigerant reclaimed before donation? Or do they have a way to reclaim it? Or would they refuse it if there was refrigerant in it?
I don't believe they would use it, but I'd be speculating on that. So, I've, you know, my understanding is that they're trying to refrain from any of those types of items. They're primarily electronics-oriented, so getting those boards and the electronic equipment, the copper, those kinds of things out of those pieces of equipment are more important. Do we have any other trailers on Main Street like that? Not that I'm aware of. I did not see any. I drove up and down there. Where they have the trailer parked on this particular site is on the east side of the building. I would say it's non-obtrusive. You really don't see it. That was part of the stipulations to make sure that it is not seen. The Planning Commission did make some comments about possibly moving it to the back portion of the site versus where it is currently located. That may block the view a little bit further. One of the concerns there has to do with parking and circulation. So, trying to find that effective balance would be important.
Someone might think that tags is a trailer that tells you stuff, but it's a figure still there now.
For storage, no.
No, it's just the only trailer I can think of that's on the building, though.
I don't know of any. To me, it seems like an eyesore. I mean, the whole reason we don't a lot of trailers, right? And it's a conditional use permit.
The trailer itself isn't what triggers the conditional use permit in this particular case. It's the activity, the idea of that storage element as part of the recycling process. So, the trailer doesn't necessarily trigger anything. It's not atypical for businesses to have vehicles, sometimes trailers and things associated with their businesses parked on their sites. Many times, those incorporate advertisement and things like that, which get a little bit more obtrusive visually. This one is a red trailer. It's about 16 feet, I believe. And generally, you do not see it from the west at all. You do see a little bit of it when you get up from the east. There's a restaurant to the east of here. And so, that building blocks it a little bit, but when you get close enough, that's when you see it. There's a view angle in there where you do see it. But I would say it's not overly obtrusive. And it's not as large as things as maybe some of the recycle bins, those kinds of things that you see out there. Other questions? How would council like to proceed with ordinance number 2397?
I move we pass ordinance number 2397, approving conditional use permit, CUP-12-04, subject to the following stipulations, A through H. Second.
Motion Morrow, second Freeman, that we pass ordinance 2397. Morrow?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Fotovich?
No.
Harrison?
Yes.
2397 passes. Thank you, David. New business item number two. Consider passing ordinance number 2398, approving amendments to chapter 18 dot 161, landscaping of the code of the city of Gardner, Kansas. Good evening again. I will just continue with presentation here for landscaping title 18 out of the Gardner Municipal Code. I've got a brief presentation, primarily bullet points and summary points, trying to highlight a few of the new things. Much of this is language that's already appearing within the current code, but there is some supplementary stuff that we do want to point out. And I'm going to hope I do the presentation right for you today. right for you today. See what happens. Maybe you should just click it. I'm not.
Hi.
Hang on a second. The frame still doesn't look good. Oh, look.
About that. I'll just go over a few things with you here. The purpose of this code rewrite is primarily to cover a few bullet points, visual and aesthetic enhancements to the community, improve the environmental conditions, encourage plant diversity, provide buffers, and you'll see a significant portion of this regarding buffers between commercial and industrial properties to residential properties primarily. There's a concern about those transitions. And then having this work with the already approved Gardner design standards, you have some architectural standards already in place. There are some landscape standards that are in the works also that will be coming before you in the future. When we talk about these kinds of bullet points, what I want to let you know is, staff was very diligent about not going overboard. So when you see the words visual and aesthetic enhancement, understand what we tried to do was look at this from the perspective of not just trees, but trees, shrubs, perennials, things like that. So there are certain enhancements, but I'd say we were very watchful of what the requirements would be and how they would affect development in the future. Sections 18, 156, point oh one through point six oh are procedural and administrative. Much of this remains unchanged. I'm not sure what I got here.
But that never happened with Amy.
I know. Kind of reminds me of you, so you want to be a Food Network star, you know, so you're going to throw at me next.
Is someone getting back a little pad of them?
I'm sorry.
I'm going to have to shut down.
Let me stop.
Let's see what happens.
Hopefully it's okay.
Oh, it's the audio recording, I think we'll be able to hear it, the microphones are off.
Right.
We can do, we can do, man, if they click it, but we might not have audio tonight.
I know, it's almost kind of crazy.
Heart pain.
Yeah. Hopefully it's okay.
Oh, it's the audio recording, I think we'll be able to hear it, the microphones are off.
We can do, we can do, man, if they click it, but we might not have audio tonight.
I heard it popping.
All right, let's try again.
Okay.
All right, we'll see what happens.
Did I restart my mic?
As I indicated on those sections, 156, point zero one zero, 165, point zero six zero, these are primarily elements that set the tone for the ordinance itself or for this chapter. Purpose and intent statement is primarily there to give guidance, because many times you will have situations that come up that the ordinance may not have anticipated, or the chapter may not have anticipated, but you go to the purpose and intent statement to try to find guidance for those situations. I will mention a couple of things here. Occupancy permit requirements, you've always had a requirement that to get your final occupancy permit, you had to have that landscape plan approved and it had to be implemented. So this is not a new condition or a new item for the community. The other item that is there that is of note are the exceptions elements. There are certain elements where we have allotted for exceptions to the ordinance and the consideration of exceptions as part of a landscape plan. That's because many times there'll be unique situations on a site and specific numbers may not be able to be met through the plan process, so that allows for the exceptions still as you see there. In point 165, point oh seven to 165, 100, those sections really address things like the number and location of plant materials. So we divided up private development sites into three general areas, the street frontage itself, the internal site, and then the property perimeter. Street frontage, you're all familiar with, that's the area right along the street right of White. As you know, here in Gardner, we try to keep those right of ways and utility easements free of plant materials of a certain size or a certain height, so we've done the same thing here. We're trying to accommodate that freedom to keep those very utilitarian and easy for maintenance later on. From the internal site standpoint, we treated residential differently than the office and commercial elements, and I think that's important for residential. We really deal with the number of dwelling units as a definition for how much landscaping should be provided. For office and commercial industrial property, we're looking at the size of the property itself, so we look at that total square footage element there. Property perimeter really only comes into play on properties that we have adjacencies to another property of a different zoning district. So for instance, if we took the Walmart that's currently out there today, we would look at the property perimeter that's along Mobile Home Park to the west of there. So we're looking at that property perimeter, it's an internal property perimeter there, and we have certain requirements for buffering and screening along those areas. Those get more intense, and you'll see in a minute, I'll get to the charts, or I'll point out the charts, those get more intense when you have a change in land use or zoning designation that jumps one or two categories outside of a used category. So industrial to residential, if they're next to each other, there's significant buffering requirements and screening requirements to help mitigate any kinds of visual or other types of impacts on the residential property. So that's what we use that property perimeter for. Internal to the site, one of the things that we wanted to look at was the parking and vehicular use areas. What you'll see there is we have perimeter requirements around a parking lot, so that five-foot area that's right adjacent to the parking area, there would be required landscaping to fit that area. They can use various treatments. It doesn't all have to be plants. It could be berms, it could be low walls, it could be any number of different things. So the design elements can take into consideration more than one solution or a combination of elements, I guess, for a solution. But we always want to have the potential for pedestrian openings in that. We don't want to completely wall off a development from a sidewalk or a public walkway, so we want to make sure that that's also planned into that element. As far as the interior area of the parking lot, we're recommending a 6.5% landscape area, which works really nice with the idea of how many parking spaces you can get into a property based on that parking space and aisle size. What it does allow for us to do is to create what are called parking blocks. That might be a little bit of a new term to you, but what it basically says is that in the case of a large parking area, you would have to break that up with the use of islands or medians or some type of other element in groups of 40 parking spaces or less. So whether that's a double-loaded aisle with 20 on one side and 20 on the other, and a median then that breaks it till you get to the next 20, or it's a linear break, 20 spaces down or 40 spaces down, and you have an island breaking those things, that's determined through the design process. Additionally, we're requiring some landscaping with building facades, that's a new element there, but we make a differentiation between viewable and non-viewable facade. There is not a requirement when a facade is non-viewable and it would not be a public use area. So if you think about most script centers and things like that, I'm going to just keep working through it. When you think about more script centers and things like that, the back sides, the service areas that are not intended for public use are not viewable, we would not require foundation plantings and things like that in those areas. It's really in the front portions of buildings. That calculation is based on approximately 20% of the facade size. So when you look at large, big boxes, that can be a significant, big box stores, that can be a significant amount of linear footage and landscaping, but yet we make accommodation as the buildings get smaller. We don't want them to be overburdened where you have landscaping going across their whole building. So 20% is the maximum on it. Should I go to my notes here and make sure? No, we talked about that. In addition to the building facades, we do have screening requirements on trash bins and service areas, ground and wall-mounted equipment, and then, like I mentioned before, the land use buffer on residential transitions. Those were items that were addressed previously in your code. One of the more unique things, and I don't have the packet in front of me, so I can't tell you exactly what page it is on, but give me a second. In section 18, point 165, point zero seven zero, I want to just point out a couple of things on the calculations that you'll notice that are a little bit different than the way they've been done before. On the internal site calculation, well, I'll start with street frontage, letter A. The one tree per 40 feet is the common standard that you require currently within your code, it is not a new standard. What I do want to point out with that element is, this doesn't mean that a tree has to be every 40 feet. It's not like you have to measure it out. They can group these trees, they can design them as they need to to fit the site. So it's just a way to calculate the actual number of trees required. On the internal site, you'll notice the recommendations on square footage requirements. We've increased the number on basis of the amount of square footage that we use for the calculation compared to what you had before. You had a calculation based on 3,000 or 4,000 square feet, depending on what zoning district it was, but that was based on building size. This is based on the property size. It makes it for an easier calculation. You look at the property size, you make your calculation off of that, so when you see things about every 10,000 square feet, that seems like a big jump, but it's primarily to accommodate the fact that this is a different calculation, it's based on the overall property. In letter C then, on property perimeter, you'll see the two tables there that I talked about with the intensity levels. Again, we have four intensity levels that are required, and depending on your zoning district, that's how we would calculate how much perimeter landscaping is required. With that, I think, let me make sure I think I've covered everything I wanted.
Hold on.
Oh.
Now it's right. Does that work?
About that, yep, I think we're good. Open it up for questions.
Do the changes that have been suggested here, do they make it any more restrictive than the other communities around us, especially as you look to the communities north that we compete to?
No. In fact, I'd still say you're less restrictive than most of those. I would say of any of them, you're closest to probably the Olathe kind of standard, but when you look at Overland Park kind of the northeast, and you go north of Olathe into Lenex and places like that, I'd say they're more stringent. We did borrow some things from each of those as guides. The 40-space parking blocks is something that we noticed that's consistently being applied in several of the other cities here in Johnson County. It is not any different than what they're requiring, so...
So there's nothing that would put us at competitive disadvantage for business development or anything?
No. I would say you will get some feedback that says it's a little more stringent than what you had before.
Right.
But in regard to comparisons, I would say you're in that middle of the road on requirements, you're not out there on the end leading the charge.
Okay.
Are you the consultant we hired to come up with? Yeah, I worked on it with Amy. And who is it meant to benefit? The public, who sees the trees and berms and things? Well, I think there's two sides to it. I think one is enhancing the business environment beyond what you have today. In several cases, one of the concerns that came up are the large parking areas, you know, that are just open, there's no brakes in those areas, they're not very pedestrian-friendly, things like that. So I would say the concerns were really driven by concerns that staff saw at the community level with some of the requirements that we have for development currently. Some of it is guided then also by the fact that the ordinance before, the chapter before, really didn't address anything but trees. It really didn't say anything about shrubs, it really didn't say much about perennials and other plant materials, and so staff was developing, what I would say, plans with the developers, and it was a negotiated process of what comes out of this. This puts some guidelines on that process. So the old standard that we use was chapter 17? It should be chapter 18. Under the code's master landscape plan? Is that it? I think 17, that one, I don't have the code with me. I believe that 17 is the requirement for having a master landscape plan is all that's really cited in there. So, and chapter 18 is actually the landscaping standards. Can't remember the section. Yeah, you're right. Yeah, on chapter 17, that's just a requirement, you know, for the need to have to give you a master landscape plan with certain development types. And that goes unchanged, that requirement stays in place. So what are you saying about the shrubs, like I'm looking at it now, and what is it that specifically this addresses that the old one did? If we go to, hold on a second, I've got to find, if we go to section 18, point 165, point zero seven zero, and I'm just, I'm pulling this out very quickly, so hopefully I've got it right, letter B on internal site, you know, the first paragraph of that addresses trees, site trees, and that's pretty typical, that's what your current ordinance would address is the trees. But if you look at the second paragraph, there's a minimum of three shrubs or evergreens per dwelling unit in residential zoning districts, and one shrub or evergreen for 5,000 square feet of total property area in office, commercial, and industrial zoning districts, that's a little more specific than what you had before. It's not that staff wasn't working to get those things, because you'd seen plans with those kinds of elements in them, but really the ordinance itself was not strong, or the chapter was not strong in saying, here are the minimum guidelines.
One of the questions I have, I'm looking specifically at the maintenance as an example, do we have concerns with gaps of expertise on staff and being able to identify and manage some of this? So for instance, I mean, there's stuff in here about requiring irrigation, perhaps if it's drought, not drought, hopefully, and then inspecting trees for insects and issues like that. Are we, is there a concern that we do not have the expertise on staff to do that? I mean, are we kind of creating a whole nother?
I'm going to have to let some other staff speak to that. I will say traditionally, there's usually people associated with parks departments and other departments who have the ability to identify those kinds of things, so if calls came in from the public and said, hey, I have a concern about this or not, somebody can go out and at least do an initial, yes, this looks that way, but I don't know particularly what you have available on staff.
Sure. We do have a certified arborist on our staff. We don't have a forestry division, per se, within the Parks and Recreation Department, but we do have some knowledgeable staff that could identify certain problems or issues on a limited basis, but certainly do have some resources, or just limited.
I would say when things come up, I know right now pine wilt is a big issue here in the area with the drought and the species of pines that have been used, not just here in Gardner, but around the Kansas City metro area. Many times when it comes to that kind of element, the cities will work with the property owners to find resolution as far as the requirements of meeting their landscape requirements, because they know some of those trees are going to get removed because of disease, but certainly they want them replaced somehow. Generally, most things on maintenance with landscape are just like anything else with property, it's a property maintenance code issue, so if folks are not taking care of those elements and they do die and they're just left there, that is something to typically look at your property maintenance code and your code enforcement officer will deal with. Usually those are complaint driven as much as anything.
Sure. I might add that we do not currently go out and inspect private property, trees and shrubs, plants and so forth. If somebody contacted us with a question and asked for some assistance, it may very well be possible that we could help them identify something or point them in the right direction to obtain some resources to look at it. But oftentimes, private property owners, they may not notice something in the early stages, and then you have a dead plant or a dead tree when it needs to be addressed, so that's most often when those things are taken care of.
One other thing that we did try to make a very conscious effort at because of staffing scenarios that are out there, this kind of requirement can get very intense from a staff perspective, not only from the design element when you're sitting with the developer, but then also during construction and in the post-construction inspections and things like that.
So that's most often when those things are taken care of.
One other thing that we did try to make a very conscious effort at because of staffing scenarios that are out there, this kind of requirement can get very intense from a staff perspective, not only from the design element when you're sitting with the developer, but then also during construction and in the post-construction inspections and things like that. We've tried to make this as easy as possible as far as a process, making the calculations simple, using round numbers for many of the square footages and that, so we're not into, you know, massive math equations trying to figure out if you need ten trees or fifteen trees. So we've tried to make this as easy to enforce as possible, but also as easy on the developer when they come in with their application that they can calculate things very well. So that's part of the reason, going back, I think, to the comment about some of the other cities. We didn't get into some of the, what I'd call is real nuances and stringent enforcement procedures that a lot of other communities do have.
Other questions? How would council like to proceed with ordinance two three nine eight?
Can we move, we pass ordinance two three nine eight, amending chapter eighteen dash one sixty-five of the code of the city of Gardner, Kansas? Second.
Motion, Morrow, second Harrison, that we pass ordinance two three nine eight. Morrow.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Freeman.
Yes.
Bodovich, yes. Two three nine eight passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, David. New business item number three. Consider adopting resolution number?
Eighteen seventy-three.
One eight seven three. Declaring a water watch due to drought, drought conditions. David.
Our conservation plan, which was adopted by resolution authorized by ordinance, has three stages, a water watch, a water warning, and a water emergency. The water watch is the first step. It's a, one of the public relations move. You have several, several recriti, internal criteria to adopt the water watch. One pertains to losing storage capacity, having it hold low seventy-five percent, not being able to recharge. And then two, our plant is running at eighty-five percent capacity for five days or more, or three Hillsdale reservoir is four feet below. And finally, externally, if the Kansas Water Office, which is the contract holder for Hillsdale, declares a water watch for Hillsdale, which is the case. We have had some peak days that run ninety percent. A couple of weekends ago, we were running a hundred percent, but that was due to extenuating circumstances. But the reason we're asking for this declaration is to follow on to the Kansas Water Office's declaration for Hillsdale. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
No questions. How would council like to proceed with resolution one eight seven three?
Remove, we adopt resolution number one eight seven three, declaring a water watch effective immediately.
Second.
Motion Harrison, second Freeman, that we adopt resolution one eight seven three. Harrison.
Yes.
Freeman.
Yes.
Bodovich, yes. Morrow.
Yes.
One eight seven three passes. New business item number four. Consider passing ordinance number two three nine nine, providing reorganization of management positions.
Mr. Mayor, there's been a request to remove this from tonight's agenda and deal with it at a later date. You missed Harrison Lee an opportunity to review the entire structure of city organization and weigh in on this and the potential other changes that she might see as necessary.
Council, okay?
Absolutely.
Very good. Okay, is there a motion to remove item number four, or table item number four?
Remove that we ta, table new business item number four. Second.
Motion Freeman, second Harrison, we table new business item number four. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All votes. Motion carries. Council update. Fourth of July celebration, yeah.
Good evening. I know on July the fifth, I sent all of you a, a brief memo following the July fourth celebration at Celebration Park. Wanted to bring this forward to the council to obtain some feedback from what your desire may be on future events. To give you a little bit of history, the event several years ago was traditionally organized by our local BMW and American Legion, I believe. A few years ago, the Chamber of Commerce and the city combined some efforts to do the organization, which was held at the high school for the public display. Construction this summer prevented the ability to have the, the display at the high school, forcing us to put it on the side, which ended up being Celebration Park. Hopefully, all of you had the ability to enjoy the show this year. I did myself. It was a great show. Don Roberts, I don't think is here this evening, but he did another great job, probably the best one I've seen here over the last many, many years. We did receive a lot of positive feedback from the citizens and visitors to the community that expressed interest in keeping it at the Celebration Park site. It gave Don, our prior, prior technician, the ability to have a, a bigger display because of his safety zones. Visiting with Don, he's more comfortable out there from a safety zone perspective. I also visited with Fire District One, Rob Kirk, he was too likely to keep it at Celebration Park for risk management, from a risk management standpoint. And did visit with Chief Francis as well. There are some concerns with traffic control, probably some additional measures. If we were to keep it at Celebration Park, would need to be put in place to assist with, with some of that traffic control. But Chief Francis did not have concerns necessarily with one site or another. Steve DeVore with the Chamber is here this evening as well. Certainly, big thanks to him for his efforts in helping us organize this event. Would just like some direction from council on, on what they'd like to see us pursue so we could start making plans for that this next year. Last bit of information to really share, as you may recall, the two thousand and eleven citizen satisfaction survey did ask the question of the citizens whether they would like to continue at the high school or move it to Celebration Park. I looked at those results again today. Sixty-six percent of those that responded did wish to keep it at the high school. Twenty-eight percent wished to move it to Celebration Park, and six percent did not answer either way. Certainly, the big desire to keep it closer to the high school or the surrounding neighborhoods and the block parties that, that are held, that's the belief. This year event, this year's event, a little bit bigger and better perhaps, gave a little new flavor. Maybe some of those opinions may have changed, maybe not. It's hard to, hard to measure at this point, but I will say from the feedback that we received, a heavy majority was very favorable to this year's event, so.
It's really pretty overwhelming as far as the positive responses and negative.
Sure.
So the only negative was the traffic and then the folks that couldn't see from their yard.
Absolutely.
That was the, the feedback that I had gotten was, you know, from the folks that live near the high school. They liked it at the high school, obviously, because they can host parties and, and stay home. The other feedback was, you know, when it's in a central location, it makes it easier for alternative viewing sites. Example being a number of people would go to the Sacred Heart parking lot and watch it from there because they had a clear, a clearer view, you know, people would be at different, different locations and watch it that way. Beyond that, the feedback that I received that people really enjoyed, you know, was the, you know, having the DJ there with the other activities, that, you know, the show itself was much more, was much expanded.